Mergid Rogui, Malungilitasil Semergao e Vice President Senator Cuartei, Flo Lider Senator Mariur, Mognir Rogui, N'artian. Pokmua Asmerel Tialngiamo, M'ngaldu e Wal, Tutsel El Al Longeru, Longdi Bergid, El Moraha, Order. Clero Gamuarauulkol.
Senator Lencel Basilius. Oi. Senator Cecilil Elbel. Senator Rugbayikkuwa Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Brian M'layreay, N'artian. Senator Sikfrit Baynagamura. Senator Enlatip Pedro.
Oi, N'artian.
Senator Tichey Imrul Mosau.
Oi.
Senator Marko Eblawrudim.
Iri.
Senator Katsugi El Tapsuyino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabelwal.
Oi.
Senator Salvador Sadoy Talams.
Oi.
Senator Mayzoni Revanluips.
Oi.
Flo Lider Kray Mariur.
Oi.
Vice President Steven Sochee Cuartei.
Oi.
Presidento Jontz Pables.
Oi.
Mister President, anya korum, anya korum e a senator, eldebel ma senator nagamura excused, for the day Flo Lider Kamu Tigaygiridra Urellet.
Vice President Malungil, soel mergao marbeka senators, donor ndubora, item por galen der gidi e kmovu da, adaptar sel Puus Joint Session Journal, ekpira al se demu adaptaringi lo bangil a technical change correction.
Si da moshun namdu ngeseegn el mu adaptra journal ra, Puus Joint Session Journal, tigel Roguil goongel du oi, Komtok, Kamuisei Flo Lider.
Se Presidente, debora item fabra igal communication na ra President El May, mariya presidential communication 1248 t'yanga, clarification malubeng omlo dolmursel supplemental belsel transmitingil merah olbila. Indregal mariya, apreskam 12, 49 na, t'yanga, reappointment tra misliya kilaman mo Palau Visitor's Authority Board of Directors. Indregal mariya apreskam, 1251, emi 1250, t'yanga, reappointment tra Norman Aids, irata boit el indregal mo dal la Palau Board of, Visitors Authority Board of Directors. Indregal mariya apreskam 1251 t'yanga, reappointment tra Miss Cindy J Fitzpatrick, indregal mo dal la Visitors Authority Board of Directors. Indregal mariya apreskam 1252, indregal reappointment tra Miss, Mister Ashley Yada, el indregal mo dal la Visitors Authority Board of Directors. Mariya apreskam 1253 t'yanga, nomination ra ngel momteera, a senate, el mo dal sel mo, adele, a single state board ra WIOA. Se Presidental Adimo wewa apoint tra senate, mo dal se idu por. Mariya apreskam, 1254 t'yanga nomination ra misso filia, Ongalivang Chuanis, reappointment ringil mo ra Ikpevi Boardan. At 12, apreskam 1255, nomination ra, Mister McMichael Mutok, Junior mo adala Museum Board of Trustees. 1256 set t'yanga, nominee ta Arbal Tagewo ngirmogul, el mora Palau Museum Board of Trustees. Apreskam 1257 el indregal, nomination ra Mister Ray Marino, el mora, el indregal mora Board of, Museum Board of Trustees. Apreskam 1258 t'yanga sel invitation motion sel Future of Asia. Ayeyi, communication na ra Officer President El May, indregal debora item six ra, communication na ra Department Heads, ali sel departmental communication 121, t'yanga sel, quarterly, financial report temnehendra, Ambarso Report 2025. Debora item seven ra igal buk communication na ra House El May. M'ngara, mariya HOD kam 1210 t'yanga, yewaisa wasetani adaptra sel joint resolution no mogodora sorah. Indregal mariya HOD communication 1211 t'yanga, transmital ra House Bill 12101, el blal, mora tribiding sa duruklim merah Senate for Action. Indregal mariya, HOD 1212 el indregal transmit ra House Bill 1211, HT1 el indregal blal longura tribiding sa duruklim men for, consideration na Senate. Indregal mariya HOD communication 1214 el indregal me transmital ra, House Bill 1241 la obengela amendment, el blal longura tribiding sa duruklim merah Senate for Consideration. Vice Presidente, debora item eight t'yanga ra igal standing committee report ma altame makmum adaptra standing committee report 1219 el girela Senate Resolution, 1219.
Si da moshun namdu ngeseegnoma bodon tir, chairman foreign affairs and bolbaski da report Senator, Ireevangla.
Sorah, teale Mister President, malogo sogol morgao ma, mekka senators. Committee噶 foreign affairs and state matters, please to offer the following report, te standing committee report number 1219, girela Senate Resolution Number 12, 1219. Committee噶 ngilua, teal resolution girela omteela Mister Tahha Mikati, Emompe Rablur Belaw is the permanent representative and ambassador of the Republic of Palau, United Nations Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization, t'yanga UNESCO. Assignment t'gal resolution mo ra Committee噶 wa bille Mister President tra February 2025. At ur t'yanga Committee噶 lomes sel, blagatakalla il masa da urelit teal blind, at t'yangara alselga constitutioner gidi, ngara article A, section one, and seven, subsection three. At ka se tigel Roguil metutka ra Obisra President El May, el mariya ureli as, National Chief Executive including appointment of ambassadors and other national officers, require advice and concentration. At ur se igidel ngara, Mr. President, Committee噶, milsubra wasel, ongnesem biography ra Mister Mikati, enel dagal sel appointment later ra Obisra President El May. Committee gam lomteegal wasengal Mister, Tahha Mikati, anamo twelve years longte ergid is the, permanent ambassador to the United, UNESCO, United Nations, Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization. Negotl mutial durual ra July 3, 22. And over the last twelve years, engal Mister Mikati awal gabera igal Roguil expense, lorate t'gal Obisergi de longte ergid emba UNESCO, yo spegaw du derabid. Committee gam teegal wasengal Mister Mikati amrali isel Adrasheobai, eh philanthropist. The President, oralborenia sesion akpor amle intebu arbebi ra senators, asemagradu idi t'yal tegoru Belaw, t'yal tegor philanthropist emattegoru Belaw. Mm, ngora amlo n'ya consentisas, tigel soril olgo seu, agut garu urtil oto da ngisso. Ngayidu roba ka vice de garde len, eh anamo fifty years, Adrasheobai, et chairman ra Gombalil Domodori masin M1 Group. Teal Gombali ya, eh international investment holding company, el mariya Shobari ngilangara telecommunication, real estate, retail, financial technology and equity. Garu ba ga ulmuel Adrasheobara 1969, Mleko found ra Gombalil Arabian Construction Company, which is in Tara McLol Construction Company alselga Middle East man North Africa. Eh 1982 gam Mister Mikati ma brother gira Najib, Amleko found ra Investor Cam, pioneering ngwalulmuel Gombalil Telecommunication, ora denwa. Later on, Mleakwara MTN Group ra 2006. And since then, teigidel M1 Group has programa, McLol Investment Gombali under Mister, Mikatis leadership. Ngara betogel sector mriyakra gula. Diseklo tutel ele Mister President, ndiaga ltegora business, ngaral robagal Mister Mikati ah, ah maltswal olgo seu. Eh mariya actually ni biakl entity, lo mogodor n'ya se Makati Foundation, Mikati Foundation, lolosera tegora education, healthcare and community development. Akwir ngaruba ah mal, lulisprategora innovation, ma social responsibility, eh mal well respected alselga business, ma sel philanthropy. Eh gal namomregera gal permanent representative ngal Mister Mikati adiregal nganiar agal olgo seyangi, teal Obis, la vice eh attenda meeting girela climate change, education, culture, ediregal promote Rablur Belaw. Indregal ugiwa belel ngaruba, et UNESCO awel amnosabel a tenusel World Heritage Listing ergi darat t'gal Southern Lagoon, Wa Kailan Southern Lagoon eh World Heritage Site. Eh Mister Mikati adiregal loltirak tagel Roguil Diplomatic Agreements ma ger Roguil, ulsel wal dro ellel longte Rablur Belaw ngara UNESCO. Eh sel, sel McLol luttabangal et t'yanga singal Mister Mikati ah, ngar sel ololtak tagel guk position Rablur Belaw girela climate change, especially wa igidel ngara igal migarel Belura t'ayi. Malwa isengal robagal maltswal olgo seu eh, eh birregal committee, olosera Rablur Belaw Committee噶 omral wasel, yewgiwa igal mlamomregal urelen, markel gorra background, ma experience ergiya Committee噶 omral wasel kay Mister Mikati, ah omral wasel se belemu talmalmon, ma permanent representative Rablur Belaw to UNESCO. Agiu seegi de Mister President, Committee噶 oni tangesu girela t'ya report, sel Senate Resolution 1219. Malso ra teale Mister President, diknoto sel Roguil members ra Committee噶, amesaying t'ya report, amansau.
Sulu ngay Senator Ireevangla, mariya solmiga kamenta. Biak, madat tigel Roguil gonert t'gal standing committee report el girela Tahha Mikati du oi. Komtok, namai, Flo Lider.
Vice Presidente, debor Senexel report makmum da adaptra standing committee report 1220, girela Senate Resolution 1224.
Si da moshun namdu ngeseegnem bodon tir at chairman ra Weisen Mintz, bolbaski da report Senator Rudim.
President, malso le malungilitasil sakil travolar motnakal member la committee Mister, Tichey Imrul Mosau, m'vogiwari por, sula Mister President.
Senator Imrul Mosau.
Sula eh Mister President, t'gal Senate Standing Committee Report Number 1220, ah melut kel girel sel Senate Resolution Number 1224. Mister President, t'gal Senate Resolution awa bolkan firm ra President, Presidential Appointment tra Miss Genesis U Roberto, mo surba adala Palau Board of Accountancy, el kalsela Erura. Mister President, ma Committee gam lomnyat teel el mo mesek t'gal appointment temlo matigal wasi, ah ultuir sel, section thirteen oh eight ra title eleven ra Palau National Code, du ulab Rablur Belaw. Engagataklia section thirteen, uh thirteen zero eight, amomad sa igal wal ngar alel malakisi el teigidel board t'gal, Palau Board of Accountancy. Maktimu, ayse Mister President, t'luwasi t'gal board ah, awal nganiya kisi el, sa license ad, the most certified public accountant ra alselga Rablur Belaw. T'gal board ha diregal mo establish a reasonable fee ra examination, admission, ma igel wal gorra telantingil ah annual license, wal girela hara umsabeel malmon, ma practice as a certified public accountant. Eh betoka telantingil teigidel, aygal duri sumakisi el, ding mulmerio ewasi t'gal board shall, to the maximum extent it considers practical considering the circumstances of Palau, adopt the policies and procedures incorporated in the Model Accountancy Act, published by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. Wasim t'gal board amomesa igel guk teletal ma tetele da, ra adra Rablur Belaw, emomesa igel teletele de emomesa wasim magarasabe edel guk, incorporate malubu kadoh, kadoh spear t'gal Model Accountancy Act, el gitmaklia American Institute of Certified Public Accountants eh, el license et tigayigidel adal tir a, asamreal mo certified public accountant. Agiu se, Mister President, ta Committee gam lomteegal wasengayidel namanil, Genesis, Miss Genesis U Roberto, ah ngilua pabilingera Bachelor of Science degree ra accounting, Ra Brigham Young University, Rablurahawai. Awurwasey ngmlemon, ma m'onguwa Master of Science degree ringi, ra Business Analytics, Analytics from Georgetown University, Rablurahawai, Washington DC. Kal Miss Roberto, Mister President, ta olumu'ra urel el Mle Junior Auditor in Assurance Services, ra Obisergi tra, Obisertal Public Auditor Rablur Belaw, serah August 2010, emo August 2011. Awurwasey ngmlo bengela Gombalil NN, NNK CPAs Inc., Rablurahana Lulu Hawaii, Lulu Role Audit Supervisor, serah ra garra 2011, emo 2015. Awurwaserah August 2015, emo December 2016, ngal Miss Roberto ulu role Audit Senior Three, ra komba in Assurance Services, lobangela Grand Thornton LLP, Rablurahawai, Portland, Oregon. Awurwaser, Mister President, tra December 2016, engmlo reor, Rablur Belaw, ngmlo assume erselu rele la Audit Manager, ra Obisergi tra, Obisra Public Auditor Rablur Belaw. Emlar seegi del Obis 2016, emo September 2018. Awurwaserah October 2018, emo November 2021, engmlo nguwa, engmlo Role Experience Manager in Financial Due Diligence, within the Strategy and Transactions Advisory Services, Division, ersel Gombalil domgodongor ngil mong Grand Thornton LLP, Ra Arlington, Rablurahawai, Virginia. Awurwasey Mle Join Ra Ernst and Young LLP, kadamdangalil ENY, Ra Rablurahawai, Tyson's, Virginia. Enga ulu role Manager of Strategy and Transactions Advisory Services, Ra ra garra 2021, emo twenty, twenty-three. El altame, Mister President, ngal Miss Genesis Roberto, uh overall Senior Manager, Ra Audit and Accounting CPA Services, Ra Gombalil Sikich LLP, t'yang Mle Gombalil Dodangalil Seigar and Rosenberg CPAs, Rablurahawai, Rockville, Maryland. Mister President, tamang diregal ngkaniya teel edel malu'usel mora namanii, engulu ay se ngmillo'usel melo ay se waseng mal samreal ekltmoklo, eh sebeel mo osur, wa igal two years el member t'gal Palau Board of Accountancy. Diregal malulu ay se waset t'ya McLol atanga'kal m'ringi t'gal appointment, engmal malakutmakli eh keltmok, kalmo dedigait malubu moto'ngeta temel ma, eh energy ringil mo kutmok la igel ngar alel, ah bol ngal tangat el mo adal t'gal board. Diregal lulu ay se wasel altame ndiaga surbragi didil, board na government Rablur Belaw Authority, malubu NGO, mong mal aside from t'gal regula rele, malmo to'ngeta temel ma igel guk klagage ngaringi maklau matenge ringi ra tegora, ah o'ur, el mora Palau Board of Accountancy. Diregal wasen ndiaga guk shobari ngi, el ubong financial commitment ringi Rablur Belaw, state, malubong federal level walbol u'ul nganiya, ah gorra question ra conflict of interest ringi ra, logiu sel guk Code of Ethics Act. Dingka, amlo ay se, Mister President, t'luwasen nganiya gorra dikegerel shobari ngi Rabluramerigel, el provide a financial and accounting advisory services. Dimlo makataklil waset tigel client ringi malubu tokya ngi, ah dekal affiliated malubu ndiaga gorra kanggetil morangi didil, el entity malubang shobara alselga Rablur Belaw. Mongomral waseng ultuy de say, ndiaga lesa guk gorabo sebeel mo, o u'uleng mo nganiya conflict of interest ringi, member t'gal board. Mister President, tamang mallo'merangal waset t'gal Palau Board of Accountancy, ah McLol ngar alel, eh malobra, la tegora licensee, license et tigel mo accounting professionals, tigel mo, ngomesa igal lo'ur ma Rablur Belaw. Eh mong malo'merangal wasen girerel maintainer integrity ra igal financial report, reporting ra alselga Republic. Malmon, mallo ay se waseng, ngatara aldangil walgora girerel m'uklisie el t'gal lurior, ay gel wal foundational responsibility, el moseta igel licensing requirements el mor t'gal igidel profession. Din diregal lulu ay se kmulu wasi, sel domesengariisel Mle RPL 371, al ay girerel guk goramo ngulme masang eh namogirerel altame lguk taaktai ta igel ngara alsel, el mo atera guk ta'amer el altay, igel guk teletal el altame lospea ra adro o'ur, el moru la igal tegora accounting ma audit. Diregal walbelo ay se, Mister President, t'luwaseng, ah El Altame se lomes ra current standard t'gal teletal ngaringil el ang, ndiaga l, it does not reflect the distinction between audits, reviews and compilations, which offer different levels of assurance. Walakal malmakataklil wasi nganiya klakaros ra audit ma review ma compilation. Mongomral wasen se atarakirerel gorra malmo makataklil, el mo provide ra sel highest level of confidence. Malubu malmo ngil mo blagatakal mora adal wasi, ay gal report el domes, ma ikal lo'ur el domes, ay gaya amral el vice, et t'ya ya, arrungole complete report ngarbada. Mongomral wasi updating the legislation to include these distinctions, would offer greater clarity for practitioners and users of financial statements. Wasem aboda update t'gal igidel la, 371, engmusabeel makataklayigel klakaros re gaiidel kaldel tegoldul mathas, ediregal mo ngil mo blagatakal mora aradal tir amrot awurior, matigal adal lospea igayidel services sel lobol lospea, financial services regal Gombal. Mister President, tamang diregal malmon, lwaset atara bolngal tangat malmingil timo adal board, nganiya gorra tablol tegol gorra sual mo maktmoklakot, eng ataramal sual mo maktmokkeringi amo develop, uh to contribute to the development and training of accounting professionals in Palau. Sual mo si kaigel bekal el du'ul mate'al, wase magarasabe edel guk masasua ngesu, el melo l'osera ngaligel Belaw tir a samreal, ah igal tegora accounting ma tegora o'ur, el guk gorra trainer tir metongoria kle el mo, o mugtel mo medu eh mapabilingir ra igayidel tegora o'ur. Ah tarat diregal mal samreal malmoru ringi amo mentor. Mentor malubong moal gorra olsisakle gorra odakada imorit t'gal igidel, el samreal ra igayidel tegora o'ur, eh o, o makrar til wasi ay gaigida ma ikagida telantingil t'gal lurior, ay gaigida sebeedel el kaineser ngil guk ngosu gara teigidel klabaryan re ngar gara, ah tegora omsu belo, lo'ur. Ah o ngilse, Mister President, ndiregal wasi ataramal sual mo maktmokkeringi amo, malmo ngil madangalia alsel t'gal, el board ra el altame lwasen malwangarat tetel elo orretel. Eh seegi de, Mister President, nganiya musabeel lomes t'luwasi yel guk klow matenge ringi ma klagage ngaringi, ah da'al, ngmga'ran esabeel lolongesor t'igal, eh t'igal ngaringi de el altame, el talgibel guk improve malubu the progress. Diregal lulu ay se waseng mang t'gal, resident sergi malubong kakera igel Belaw, Mister President. Mongwaseng malmo si kaigel bekal teal eh prioritize malubong mo, oh prioritize sa ta'am, el musabeel lospea igal tegora melidiul virtual engagement, ospe t'gal teletara melidiul eh magadu el met t'gal igidel, el adal board ma, t'gal igidel Palau Accountancy Board, lomes lwasen ngarayigel tegol sebeetma ki eh kaineser gi. Uh Mister President, tamu, ah, ngal namania diregal wasi, to improve timeliness and effectiveness, ngrekomendel wase bol nganiya introduction and publication of an annual audit work plan. Sea gorra atara recommendation ringi. Mm, waseng ang deka ututel sel mal extensive malubu gorra malo'widel. Waset t'gal plan awa bol communicate priorities clearly to audit staff, stakeholders and the public. Teagoraqmedel muisel blada discussion ngi lobangela auditor, Mister President, ra gorra timeline malubung, ndaitang goradi siasingil ololtel wasegi gaigida ngaringi lurior eh gad anticipate. lurior, eh gad anticipate, ah wangarate telela, ah ta'm, ma progressive. Ngwasi, ngulu ay se, lo ase akwam Office of Public Accountabilities Annual Audit Plan, se ase edel korak mo mes ringi, lo asing wangaral teletara lospe' ringi, el, elmo trans, eh transparent, the risk-based approach, elmo se beel smisi iti al iki al audit outcomes. Mr. President, tamah, ah mal dimo lobongaling uwa ay sa, Miss Roberto, lo asing madinge, lo asing mal batoka challenges, tokai iki labanga labor, dal limited resources, dal limited capacity, mal lo regal, wasa bolngal ta'ngat, malu ngable sing ra arangalela senate, babol se beel mo part teal board, ra Palau Accountancy Board, eh bol se il kainasero, wase makarasi il kuk, ah talgi bilongatal taluyut, eh bol se beel teal board, malo role kiire ra adro belau. El ngosutriar ngal, kal ti ra direkhal samariar, ra iki dal tokora au'ur. Ah ah, ah ogi usia, Mr. President, ta kamitir garawais and means, ah malo marangal, wasengal, Miss Genesis Roberto, ah tu regal experience ringi, background qualification, ma iki rohul lalruth lurior, Engdiaka mal el questioner mamra kuk expertise ringi, ma qualification ringi, eh iki malo marangal, wasengas beel mo ngosu, ngosu'rit teal board, ma yo lingit ra support, ra arangalela board, dal kiire, Engal namani, eh Mr. President, sulara teal.
Sulange Senator Ramosaw? Tirigel rohul gonger, teal standing kamitir report, dal kiirela Genesis Roberto duoi.
Oh.
Komtok? Namai, flow leader.
Ogi usia Presidente, borsel next ma'kumudadap tra standing kamitir report 1221, kiirela senate resolution 1226.
Seka da motion on namadong e segna? Podon tirat chairman mo, ol reski da report.
Alwase, Presidente, gamal sawle, malmingil teal chisimar beklaf. Ah kamitir ga adugeshun, motru'kli teal senate resolution 1226, eti al senate resolution ah agirela oturke'ke'la ometke'la Mr. Sylvester Francis Alonso, bo'dala Palau National Scholarship Board, dal kelsel ewarra. Didol turigabo se, edo dosi teal resolution. Teal resolution ah multipidi tan'apresenta Paulis, Ra sera oge'wal, eh algabsin lo'ngal bui el arak, eti anga multirbe'ki ra kamitir gau, elmo omesa atrentengil, eh to'vra omthodel teal resolution el alchil. Ah kamitir gamlo mesai iki rohul, se korak namani, ya'tan no mti, wasa, ah Mr. Sylvester Alonso, ganga over bachelor's degree ringi, Ra Ulitius Studies with a minor in Chinese language and culture, Loyola University. Eh this is your timing, la uwa master's degree ringi, human rights and humanitarian action, Ra sa, ah from sciences, Paul Paris, um, Jasko'ngar Paris, se iki la master's degree ringi. Direkhal malmon, lo mesai iki babilingen, esera 2017, elmo 2020, Enggang amla ra ah Loyola University, ya Mr. Alonso, amlebto'ra atrentengila urol urol, eh direkhal, kagaro's department. Direkhal urol, sel audiovisual technician logistics, eh campus ministry, eh direkhal receptionist, eh direkhal provider services, sel dangara ogdela, edel dartel, okya katengi dal part teal school. Direkhal sera 2019, ya Mr. Alonso, amler belau mle intern, ulu role Ministry of State, eh direkhal ulu'ur atogra school, emle gal merbelau, eh mlo urol, Palau Cross Society, el intern, eh direkhal mlos project specialist. Awurul ta'm, engang amlo instructor, eh college counseling coordinator, Ra Mitchente High School, el alchil, Engal ah Mr. Alonso, ah what I told chief of the Division of Youth and Career Development, Ra Ministry of Human Resources, Culture and Tourism and Development. Ah kamitir ga modongia, Mr. Alonso, se engang amal ngarbavaskulel bui, gedirekhal, oh tokol tokora bulak, eh direkhal keke ngaringi, awurior maskulel, nganiya kal da'al ba ringi, ra tokora paratiks, ma tokol buai, eh direkhal tokoda, awurul obntirera ak, malugeto manager, ah drongirera ak, se atara dodongil, taramal uil urelere iki gir, tokora skulel, ma keke ngi. Ah kamitir ga direkhal uldul, uldulpe'at tokora, agerel moringi, bol se el korak mo omagail, smodiya audusel, ma rungul kiirel teal ometke'la mora PNSP, ngulu ay se, kiiru wasengamal, tilbile arungul, wasengmol, abonngal ta'ngat, melbongel, se rohia iki ewarra ak kelsel, se ya plan green mergid, eh direkhal uwa ay se, waseng, ne adala Palau Cross Society, eh adala Palau Conservation Society, eh direkhal adal sel Palau Weightlifting Federation, iki da bebilat tokoniya ah aral sel, eh ngil matmokla iki gir, bebilat tokoniya. Odurgeringi, wase kabol blakatakwa, waseng, iki keke ngaringi, ma'karangosu'in, mo'adala ah mo'ngil, adala board, ra Palau National Scholarship Board, ah Mr. Alonso, sa uwa ay se, wasa iki le deral hm mah lulu'ulol, kme'lo obntian ra school, ah Mitchente High School, eh direkhal lulu'ulobntira Division of Youth and Career Development. Ogi iki gir, lungil, lulu'ulobntirera ak, Arsen Say, mal graskool, ma direkhal aral board, engam la ulo'ntira adro boarda PNSP, engnamo direkhal obntirera iki al embassy, Ra Belura Belau, ma kagaro's private organizations, ma civic action team. Ah Mr. Alonso, asu'vi waseng manla, anyela korak esrul das, ma direkhal, mombingep tokol ngaral, malubongi gel ometke'la, adro se adro board, engla angra iki gir, dal madinge tokoi, ngarangaral iki dal mongatmok, malubong ngarosngirera adel, wase tokora board, engra iki lukmokla, iki da, ogi iki iki luriere, engkora amlamutrigibil, loklekeke ngaringi, iki wase akpoh, amo korak iki dal mugutmok, se iki dal lo'otil, gir la iki al plan chisringi lurior. Ah direkhal, Mr. Alonso, ah direkhal mal walkorak ah misirat tokol wase, teal ometke'el mo'adala board, awal korak ah lamese waseng korak tergibil tokubetsel, telbaksa ra klangan ringi, le ngwasaya god, engang amle god, lomo recipient scholarship. Eh mergo etook demei, eh mo urol program, eh partner tir ma adra PNSP, el al do magasel mo waseng ma adra board, ngwasi egang awal korak mal telbaksa ra klangan ringi, mal lolsoal waseng tokoy, ngospe'atil wasetial, lometke'el mo'adala board, ah tokol atanga'ak le sang, eh direkhal waseng, direkhal wal tergibil korak, ah lamese waseng mo'kroy kiirel, direkanya umsuvira alsel tiang, ngo mesi waseng oy mal tang mo'goro'widal, kiirel mo'aniya losuvu tokoi, ding waseng mal tilbile arungul, waselbong, mo'ngil masu, eh mosi lukmoklanger alel, eh mosi kurabab sebe'el, seki da malo terkrim mergid. Direkhal domesai iki babilingi, waseng ogi iki tokora skulel, iki nya keke nyato'ora uior, ya Mr. Alonso, ah dal trikel gergi, krosi iki teal, lwal korak, ah monglora osngil, ma du'ur ringi, mora kagaro'sil putikirara ak, ma kagaro'sil tokoro, eh iki da bebiras, sebe'el ngosu'ira, iki mo wa'lbongela school ma adra board. Um, direkhal wase iki, eh keke ngaringi, ah ma tokora school nya mlaso isu'ra alsel, awa'ablal, desi ingala adro mo trikel adro hm lamoda'al ba el ak, eh direkhal wase, aktirekhal isil ta'm, engadro, mongra tokol waseng kadamal molma umsuvira klakak, eh iki gir, bebilat tokol, platsis pra alsel. Wase teki dil, eh curantil luriere el ang, lolngasero alsel school, le direkhal lolngasero iki la school, lamesa ngasra adro belau, ah direkhal mosi el, ngosu'ir, mosi beel, lorela scholarship, mora ngal, eh direkhal wal lolisi arandira ngal, gal mo'omral, waseng sabir, eh direkhal lolngasero aral ngal, waseng ma'karado, ohmdal ma iki, wa'abol, luriere trataraklupsi, iki da bebilat tokol, dosa alsel iki babilingen. Eh direkhal mal dulira babilingi wase, ah Mr. Alonso, malo'omral, wase ya, sel sebe'eman morata'inga, kal ngwa skulema taina. Engwal, korak isi'ela aren, eh direkhal isi'ela uldas, eh nya silis pra alsel, mong malo'omral, wase iki, kiire dal mo omra elu uwa ay se, ra ngalge, eh direkhal misi arandira ngalke belau, el mol degedakat tokora school ra kaldaina, seki damal ogi usia gir, ngia, mleke keke ngaringi tokon soal, aral ngalke bela, bol sipro ay se gir, lomra el. Wasil, asuma mong'adala board, eng mal mo mlasam, waseng ma'karalo otmokla'ongil, policy development, eh direkhal isil ta'm, engka'ra bol se beel mo tokol mora uai, elmo, madirira ngalge, eh subdi'tirira iki teal, lti ra sabir, seki damal korak platsis ringi. Wasi alsekum, mong'altanga'at, mosi el motro'k, mo'adala board, eh mongomral, waseng gir, elmo ngurulobntirigal adra board, elmo korak asodangara application, ma evaluation process, ra tokora scholarship, eh direkhal, lobongela iki kadamo mesai iki keke ngarangal, waseng ngara iki, bodsis pra alsel, eh ma'karado ngosu'ira ngal, high school, ma college level, iki experiences, etira ah agiril sois pra alsel, ngosu'rit, eh direkhal emphasis waseng tokora school, luldimukra umsuvira tokora im madu'ra im, iki adal lomral tokol, wase iki adil diul, gir el mra el tokol. Eh subdi'el wase, teal mo madu'ra im, malubong didu, ah wayal, lomral, dulira babingaseng right of passage, mbaxra klakak, iklo'tutelel, eh kiirel ngaringi, lu'ul, misia waldo da'era, ah ngalge dal mo mai iki, keke ngaringi, tir a uspe'ra tokora uior. Ah bebirra iki, lo masi waseng, ngariol iki keke ngaradal, bu'ul ngawior, asubdi waseng iki el mo'madu'ul, bokobuai el ak, adil iki se el mo'ongil madu'ra buai, eh direkhal adil, eh direkhal da'al ba, lobantirira atokol, adil, lomru'ul lobantirira, da iki el basi, bebirra. Bebirra tokol wase iki, ah ngar ngalge, inkisi'ira, omrolira, ah school ma klakak. Ah kadirekhal lo, lugerin waseng ngara iki bebirra, lomdasongil teletay, mosi beedel, ngosutriar ngalge, tir kukno omkuru'ul direkhal chispra, tul, tengare iki la tokora, chugisinal process, Ra Belura Belau, eh mongomral, wasegadengire dal mo korikil, motu'vdo'lo dingra'ra ak, eh mo korikil tari, alube kadamo, mdal mal motirigil, kagaro'sil, ngasra adra bela, ra kagaro'sil tokorora, alsel belau, iki da direkhal basi. Eh direkhal waseng gir la board, malo molmle ngara alsel, loma'isel mora school, eh make sure, aral ngalra school, ma'adam, ma'adik. Amo'ki klawadra tokora PNSP, ra iki ngaringi programs, ma iki minesos, sebe'ing ma'ra obis ra PNSP. Kiirel waseng tokutre'la school ma'adra, aral ngalra school, ma'adam, ma'adik, amokpohad, se mal makataklil. Eh direkhal, lomra tokol wase, ah trikel, diplomatic allies regi, tirigal se'idra, kagaro'sil lungan belau, ah direkhal iki dal lo mo'ontiril, lomru'ul, si iki iki teal, se beedel ma'ing memstirira ngalge, eh direkhal waseng gir dal lolngasero aral ngalge, gir la about professional development, ma personal development, du'ra tokora kodil awurior, ma du'ra klakak, iki iki dal la'ul, lolngasero aral ngalge, tiga'l applicant, ngalke bela, mora school, iki bebirra kiire dal lolngasir, tigirat tokol. Ah Mr. Alonso, asubdi wase, asukum, mong'altanga', iki nyawa'lo korak mo'belsaal, mo'beldaklal, wasa godeng mo' siga teal, waseng ma'karatsi beedel lo siga kagaro'sil intensive, mo tokor intensive, oh ngalke bela, ngalke belau, ngar school, merbelal, me awurior, eh gu'gomesa atrentengila uior, ma direkhal trainingsip, ma'karab, direkhal motoka atrentengila training, mora ngal, sebe'il, direkhal wa'adkorak ah oge'di sel, dilwill ra, ah unga school la tang, ma adro madu'ul moru'ra kagaro'sil, ndiaka dimtokra school, eh ta'alba'ra uior, iki damenangasulil dulit tiang, le ngo'isake'it, ah di tokra school, melo ba degree ringi, ah mal madu'ra lomse, mauldas, ndikal, kalda'alba'ra kodil uior, se ya direkhal, iki ma'ki da, kadangatanga'at, le masab, iki da makrututelil, mora ngalke da, ltokodang. Eh direkhal lomral, waseng giril, teki tokoda, mongususero aral ngalke merbelau, ending giril, direkhal malngasero, ti malamei, eh ma'karadosis, betiru uior, malmasa iki tokosin. Oi kadamo mongususero aral ngalke merbelau, eh this is your time, misel lakardang, eh ma'karado ngosu'ir, kosispiru uior, malongin masa tiang, le iki da ah bebirra tokol, lalbongela PNSP, malubong scholarship, rigiril, wase kadamakarang, eh mongususero aral ngalke demei, malorma, kadamakarang, masitiru gayri, le iki da ba kadangatanga'at, le masa tiang, ogi iki gir, mal tokol ngil tokol, Mr. Alonso, mlam skit, ta kamitir ga godak, malngasulila vice-chairman, marukun members, entige'la adro gir, diela'al mlatmokratil urul, malmutra hiring, eh obo'waisi iki de, ah kamitir ga, eh Mr. President, ah malo'ingita say. Ah Mr. Alonso, kadangatanga'at, entrangalke bela, malgael mei, kadamamesa, danga'ringi ra uior, ma rungurra uior, mesel blakarangani'il, lulotira hiring, to'ngito, wase adil unira beklaf, kadamal o'ingita support ra beklaf, teal report, eh direkhal bol se edel, ma'arogun, se resolution 1226, el al sesion, bol se eden gal, madalma'ra PNSP, eh bo'idek, talalur, scholarship, sulanga, Mr. President.
Sulange Senator Tabalwal? Seka da kamitir report, tamang Senator Mariur?
Um sulha, Presidente, aktirigal mal, lobongela chairman, mal utengal bui darah, kegril adesel, mal korak, durlomla, longul du'ula. Ma'kmal korak mo'omra iki dil, ulsel wase kadamral, ngosu'ira adra scholarship, ndi, ndiaka dil mel, lungyang. Akumdaset, teal investment, iki dal scholarship, amral giril, luma'adro motubdira school, ngulme'wase pipere ringi, mosbe'el, mong mai galu'ur. Akumdaset se iki, nyama'spel, mo'complete, iki dal investment, iki dal motigal ngalke, tir mal, lobongela chairman, o'lingita beklaf, wase sebe'el kokal ngang. Mal kegril adhe, korak uldurlomla, longudul ba, ma morungudon, tarakora, mal, akumdasen, adirekhal teal skulel, blalngur, korak mal, butoka school, lbelur ngi, ngwal korak mal ngari'ar ngul, eh mal, umil, tiran mal, oheng support, ltokodang, kelskolar, sulha, Presidente.
Sulha Senator Mariur, Senator Sungino?
Sulha telege, Mr. Presidente, malongili tasil semirgau ma, albekl senators. Akotak malu'urangasulila chairman, mal, no, maklamalongil uior, alonguis moditi al report, mka'damal, umil understand ringi. Mal dimo, obongela, eh direkhal mal dimo okya full supporter, ngalaleng, iki bal, lolgo, flow leader iki. Engal bui ga walk to tok. Mal umil example, ra kegril adro, sel ngara osangida adro bela, rohul, lames ra, ngalke dal to'vdel mon, smisi akla'omarangarangi, el mu'tel gaya, sel bela, la verse, iki dal investment, eh melo basa iki dal lulklaw madinge ringi, oh mu'ul ringi, se iki dal aids ngarangi, le el altame. Eh mori bayte, tirige iki dal rohul, ma'kigalil adro, labol, tatsa klangan tir, ra alsel a program scholarship, ma tokora youth ra alsel, Ra Belura Belau, le. Akti, mesi iki dal tul, mal lo'oba ra tokora scholarship, el mor sel position, la ngaringi, el angal chip ra youth, ma sel networking, el creator ringi, tra lo ba'anesu, el mora ki'galil ak, elmo mdengala, mmo'mdengalis iki dal padwe, el mora a success ringi, soal mori, mo, ak mal, lobongela chairman, ma flow leader, ma bekl senators, direkhal mal o'lingita support, iki dal, ngalke'galil ak, ngalke'belau, mal, lul, lomel arungul, iki dal teal position, sulange, Mr. President.
Sulange Senator Sungino? Diakanu? Sum diakanu, etirigel rohul gonger, teal standing kamitir report, dal kiirela Mr. Sylvester Alonso duoi. Komtok? Namai, flow leader.
Ogi usia Presidente, borsel, lulbongal, report ma'kumudadap, standing kamitir report 1222, kiirela senate resolution 1225.
Podon tirat chairman, ah? Pedro. Ra language, Senator Pedro.
Mal unil ladosa eh Mister Presidenta Senate, Senator Jocelyn Paulas. Vice Presidenta Senate Senator Stevenson Jay Quarte. Floridere Senate Senator Gray Mariur, Marbeke Senators. Akmo report trastending Committee Report number twelve twenty two. Ngiril la Senate Resolution number twelve, a story five. Alnyaya maqongela omeltke la President, blubelau. Mister Jeffrey Olgaril, ilmo adala kalaol language commission lewarak. Ma unita report, dalwagaki da balbaktlen. Sera eyal gobsingil unival buil el alraq, April eight twenty twenty five. Egal Presidenta Senate Amlo Vercia, Senate Resolution number twelve a story five. Logiu onit, emloqmar alia gama tirgara culture ma social welfare. Mengmosubre te resolution emeri port ngiru alole la Senate. Tial appointment Mister Olgaril, University Presidenta blubelau. Alol tirakra twenty two PNC subsection eight oh one B. Amokte gertel uru la uloltra daaringi. Metel gama tia ulamesa resumer Mister Olgaril. Ra uer aloluus ilmo ngil ngiril tial omeltke la ilmo ra kalaol language commission. Mister President, ngutu ra resumer Mister Olgaril, yaka mitia mlomatigaringil. Gal Mister Olgaril ulemu ra sculel ra kurur elementary school. Emillemol mla ma rapala high school. Nentilov rapala high school emlo ra MOC. Micro Nishan occupational college and mea piscisir alaltain. Edtilov de lo bang a associate of science degree. Uri ra MOC emlo ra scula University, University of Guam, el erulra. Ah Mister Olgaril ulemu ul el uru or preservation cataloguer. Radivisiona cultural affairs, ersel me Ministry of Community and Cultural Affairs. Ya uru, ya uru retiang emlo uru ra kalaol visitors authority, el community programs officer. Ya uru ul emlo uru or Ministry of Education. El coordinatora vocational rehabilitation. Ediregal mlosensee rapalawan studies, rapala high school. Gal Mister Olgaril adiregal lulurior, el managera suwangen science company. Eh el altain men sensee rapalawan studiesa emaus petania high school. Mister President, takamitia kilkmaklia orange boy. Ra Mister Olgaril seratru emelol me gabsingil el alungeval. Gabsingil unival buil, April sixteen twenty twenty five. Aradalakamiti mlartal hiring, angal chair person. Eh diregal Senator Salvador Sadoy, talamsel mea Vice Chairman. Members samlaringi, members lakamiti, ah Senate Leader Senator Gray Mariur. Senator Sikrid Nakamura, Senator Tichay Mosao. Senator Kazuki etapsungino, ma Senator Andrew Tabalwal. Adiregal mlartal hiring eh Presidente. Egaol Presidenta Senate Senator Jocelyn Paulas. Senator Lenzer Basilius ma Senator Cecilil Endure. A gama tia olduroklo akaril ilmo ra Mister Olgaril, ai gaki daigeel mlengel ngi el meragamiti. Unsa mariari kalkmo klo ilmo adala kalaol language commission. El ewalraan sugumia Senate tamogonye tial omeltke. Omaranakmo abaal mal ubankkege ngari ngi ra osis aklela kalaol studies. Amsa nga atmol eklamadengira togor belau. El ngia omaranaksebeen ngusvir kalaol language commission ra ureren. Diregal omaranakmo, ngarinyateal el mosmisi a omsubela togor belau ra alcela school. El altain Mister Olgaril adaglo dangi, albanalela kalaol language commission. Ndingma luloti aklamariyare ngari ngi, el mauriol melisi a omsubela togor belau rascula. Emalakoi wasi ayldoy sarangal kanagod el blu. Ngaraskuler bela wa mla lul trirar sensee maselulisa aklle to uspe ra togora ngalba. Omara nga Mister Olgaril akmo, ngiril kalaol language commission. Smisi, smisi i, ma togor belau abol uspe ra alcela classroom. Sera, sera hiringnya Mister Olgaril amlooti. Luoo otia masisi eklamadengir ngi ra urerel ma objective sa kalaol language commission. Luu aisakmo, retail, el adra government. Eh el altain noru or sensee ra private school. Diregal mne share experience ngil sensee rapalawan studies. lul dimuk ra participation ngiru la language workshop. El lunatmok la Ministry ra Education, lul lobantir tigeal kalaon studies specialist. Ah Mister Olgaril uldu ba ra unil masisi ilurior adalongele kalaol language commission. Ma igal school mengmosubela kalaon language framework, ilmo dimuk ra kilo kilo ma school. Madu uri ngi ra uru or masel klamariyare ngari ngi. El mangalwol we promote temalisi ra kalaon language. Ah Mister Olgaril adiregal omaranakmo, ablur asonsarol mahatoobi. Arunga plaburu belau, mategingi ra ngiril diregal runga plat togor belau. Malu isei Mister President, yaka mitirgara culture ma social welfare. Ah olduba ra omeltke la Mister Olgaril, ilmo adala kalaol language commission. Ediregal olduba ra omelyul tial Senate Resolution number twelve thirty five, ra alalela Senate. Mlegeegid eh Mister Presidente sulang.
Sulang eh Senator Pedro. Tirgel gongerte tial standing committee report, ngiril Jeffrey Olgaril duoi. Om tok, namai Floridere.
Lo isei President sarogira urile ra itemme tra standing committee report, item nine ra special committee reports. Dyaga ngari, war order of the day. Item tenadi akta bra item eleven ravil calendar. Ngalge ngalge first reading, alaltain maqmu da pasra Senate Bill twelve twenty five rakotlomi bel.
Segida motion namdung esegna makler gami wetaiton.
Senate Bill number twelve twenty five. Bill for not to authorize inappropriate additional sums from the National Treasury. For channel operations and capital improvements of the Republic of Palau. For fiscal year twenty twenty five. Through amendments to PPL eleven thirty seven is amended. To amend the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Through amendments to PPL eleven thirty one is amended. To account for new guidance from the United States regarding the usage of compact panda. Terudas mulaa mo toda daalila udo dra omsangila government. Ilmo ngiril aora tiala government ma egil togora capital improvement. El alragra twenty twenty five. Lobongila omlod ilmo ra PPL eleven thirty seven. Diregal bongila omlod ilmo ra, ah eh fiscal year twenty twenty four. Ra PPL eleven thirty one. Ngiril mo ora akata kli uru ngiril a gel udo dra compact panda. Terudas mulaa bitu siniya takal President tablur bela sulang eh Swift Junior.
Senator Mariur.
Oi Presidente tiya, sara senomregal sesion argid, tira nyamnay tegidil. Ilpa setelwal mlengiril mo replaysa seegidil gida ngilur sil mne kotel sesion argid. Ndi kuasese mnamora regord na mangara first reading. Mu kuusabitra tial mel mo subedel tia mo replaysa seegidil. Ilpa setel gida supplemental gida ngilur seegidil kotel sesion argid. Walblakatakuwa, waldukun ngirul supplemental ndi tiang awabo replaysa seegidil ngilur sil kotel sesion. Sulap President.
Sulas Senator Mariur, ngari ngoda, Senator Tabalwal.
Taktrigal dulit tiang gangestera watetl. Um, mo gangestera sel ngatapiente msa de sel wasi ngarinya ngiril udo du lmo ra. Ascul, ngasangsa sculants, then temnao. Kadengiril altain atoltok daugod lmo mara, akalil trigil ngarabulu. Di pordele porde sel sculants sa earmark ilmo ra sculants. Akpudina kaimo indiakarataal mo marangod na kaling ngiril dimo ngalirangascul. Makti grace ringi, trigil ala mo misri. Udu nganwasi, asukumun sculants, ngaram sculants, kademla tabubin mo marangod toko. Ekna ronsirar guku wasi, tenasangsa ngasang, lengi la mo mara egidu ku. Ndakal mngita program ilmo ra odeids. Ndi ndakal ngiril malasa ngalir ngalge, mamurla bebirra toko. Pmegisegil statement ma bodoma se tiang. Wesam okil mo unil manal ngali aral ngalge, epodo lasa ngi, yavise. Ndakal unil morangascul sulang.
Sulas Senator Tabalwal, tiramora attention Chairman always enminse, dyaga od. Sum dyaga od etirger rogu ilgonger tial lulasul mola rakotlomi bel duoi. Om tok, namai kadasa in ngil mo ra Chairman Ludim, Chairman always enminse, Floridere.
Presidente real the move, ah the kumuda pasra Senate Bill twelve twenty six rakotlomi bel.
Segida motion namdung esegna makler gami wetaiton.
Senate Bill number twelve twenty six. Bill for not to clarify the authority of the Palau Public Utilities Corporation, PUC. To recover grid and energy related cost from the netbrink customers under thirty seven PNC a subsection six oh one. Terudas mulaa mo clarify se kisiela PUC, ilmo ricaberai gel deyil blal blelus. Ilbeel bigos tia egidil togora netbrink act, under thirty seven PNC subsection six oh one. Terudas mulaa bitu siniya Senator Mark Erblewudim. President Senator Jocelyn Paulas. Floridere Senator Gray Mariur. Vice President Senator Stevenson Jay Quarte. Senator Brian Malirei, Senator Lenzer Basilius. Senator Tichay Imur Mongso, Senator Enlati Pedro ma Senator Kasubi El Tapsungino.
Segida sel lulasul mola rakotlomi bel we bodontira Senator Ludim, bolbiskida digadebl omsodel tiang, Senator Ludim.
Oi malmasari eh Mister Presidenta, Senate Bill number twelve twenty six. Adimo clarifying, malewa dimutra mamkata kli ngaralela PUC. Imosubel in charge, ai gel appropriated charges ra fixed cost that did. Ilmo tiga uspe asolar injekt lmo ra PUC grid. El altain eh Mister President, ndakal blakatakra billar customers. Walmutra ababilingela PUC lmera January twenty eighth lmera gawa maspige. Adiregal lamkataktil wasi. Tirgel dyaglo solar, abesitli tomolu aral adalou solar. Ntiang abay mnamor ya sapsevin logiwar okyak ilmo ra PUC, ilmo ra adalou solar. Ntiang lulasul mola, adimo mkatakliak kisiel olbi ra amina PUC. Imosubel charger sel proper rate ra cost recovery tira igal solar injections lmo ra grid. Sulamister President.
Sulang eh Senator Ludim, ngari axol me kakament. Dyak, sum dyagetirger rogu ilgonger tial lulasul mola rakotlomi bel duoi. Om tok, namai assign el mo ra Chairman Mariur, Floridere.
Se Presidente bor senexelbin maqmu da pasra Senate Bill twelve twenty seven rakotlomi bel.
Segida motion namdung esegna makler gami wetaiton.
Senate Bill number twelve twenty seven. Bill for not to amend chapter nine of forty two PNC. To modify the provisions related to tinti on vehicle windows. Terudas mulaa amalod ra chapter nine ra forty two PNC. Ilmo orangmo ai gel uspalila tinti ramlay. Terudas mulaa bitu siniya Senator Kasubi El Tapsungino, Senator Tichay Imur Mongso. Senator Salvador Sadoy Talams ma Floridere Senator Gray Mariur.
Segida sel lulasul mola rakotlomi bel bodontira Senator Sungino, bolbiskida omsodel, Senator Sungino.
Sulang eh Mister Presidente, egan mal unilitasil semirgawa. Ah tial lulasul mola eh Mister Presidenta do dengel komoda, du lurur ngi seramela astel olbi lo, illeben do. Um, lo pasa tribidi ra tiang, lno ra house of delegates. Ediregal lno ra ganfui eh mal dutu time ganstrints, ganokme de eleksion engwal. Lol madie lersegidim lodegal luptu mara elamo. Ah mal adi, di, gdediril luptu bui introduce ngile. Lulasul mola ah mo olwasira adra blul ngiril ah, ah pay request that did. Ediregal lo burang ma se ma namomgalida bluath. Ah igal tial ulatintel twenty percent el ngara garasa ediregal namodegal enough el kolkol tiya alcela amlay. Mang ediregal uspalila, igal mneirina ediregal di lo, dingara higher condition ngil. Ediregal gora relate lmo ra kuk, ah gusaklila uspalila alu ilmo ramlay. Mang segidawan ra gora ediregal findings ra akial lulasul mola. Ediregal ngayro nga ediregal dimo help el, el clarify bebirra toko de sel debra blabuulis. Segida ediregal, mo gora ngaria difra uk opinion se tir ma kuk opinion ra echil ngiril. Sel la, almutel la, kmutial six intseramdal amlay, engmakarang alol, alol, alol tau teri. Mang adiregal mo malodel ngal alcel tiang, adiregal mo clarify seegidil. Ma segida dimo falor ngelsan visor, el horizontal ilmo ra class. Ngageegida rule part tial mla el vice vedro uspe ngi insedra msa da six intse ma. Ah togora lukuk omsodela tetele la class, ilmo ngi segidil gora klagaga bos ra alla, ah interpretationer tir alla. Ah ediregal part ra tial lulasul mola, ediregal mo, o mulubutai gel arala ah atintel. Modega klagaga bos arala altelal presenten tela aran, maltelal presenten tela aran. Dimo regio sel registera aden, seegida aral el per ngi dega lbur ngia extra cost lottapusti. Ah ediregal mlepa tra egidil lomsubert tiang, adiregal lulgera bulis elmei. Ediregal me laudusur ngiril ai gel rogu gora mledasul mola mo. Terudomesengil ngarmada damal gora sel gapi hensib il lo dakta galdasu rogu. Ni wal lo la gata ellel tov damkademal de ngilu il mutu bui introduce ngi. Tra lomisakma singsebeda tsensal ulatinti, te ede Mister Presidente mslang.
Sulang eh Senator Sungino, sum dyaga kamente tirger rogu ilgonger tial lulasul mola rakotlomi bel duoi. Om tok, namai eti assign el mo ra gama tira JGA, Floridere.
Se Presidente bor sel nextelbil maqmu da pasra Senate Bill twelve das, ah, twenty eight, twelve twenty eight rakotlomi bel.
Segida motion namdung esegna, bodontira introduce Senator Ludim, bolbiskida omsodel tiang, Senator Ludim.
Sulamister Presidente tiang ah Senate Bill number twelve twenty eight. Mister Presidente tiya mokte ngin laa, lulasul mola, amalumrasela bakasan. Ilmalal badula klovela, ilbingela audowd buai, ra especially government services. El altain eh Mister Presidente ngien relingwal, songosulil da bingela audowd lmo ra adalurior, ra per category. Et tiang adimo mkataptilo wasi ngarinya critical services, mangarinya essential services. Sel bodomo bonya Mister Presidente ai gel kotruspa al services ra adra blu uspe. Ra togora law enforcement, ma national security, ma togora health. Ma togora dengi maran, ma togora disaster preparedness. Ma togora kadagiril make sure ngadotirakrala rogu. Ma egir ngidil trilata Presidenta amodey sikney malu talbla amo mkatatakwa wasi. Ai giagida dyagswe mngurtra yosang blubelau, legidra ader bela rogu uspe, egireklovela. Abingela audowd lmoirti. El ala, ediregal Mister Presidente ediregal wal incentivize ra. Restructuring ra implementar government, mmo klahtuk wasi tra ngarai gel uru or mal uspal. Mal bol haliday ma ngatengidil mal malurior. Ai gel guktibo essential services al gukun subedel halidensel lo ngul. Waleben kuksbeda suspender sumo mori nganansel aoudowd. Digak critical services, ai gel rogu make sure, ndakal subedel malod mal ebembaginta, logiwar yosang blubelau. Sulamister President.
Sulas Senator Ludim, ngari axol me kakament, Senator Inavo.
Sulang eh Presidente. Akkura di ngarinya gadi gal ngiril tial lulasul mola, el wasi gal tiang. Um, kadmo chentsa alla ra budget, makarang, makarang abajet la uru or lortirakar tiang. Tiang magiril lortirakar ngisel doru ra budget, kura di segida ra, ra introduction. ah, introduce.
Senator Ludim.
De, malmasaule, Mr. Presidente, msaule, Senator Inabo ra question. Se, bomomesengi, ngisel bol Minister of Finance, si bolol trok, ngasengasang saudow. Eh, kuradi, in order of priority, itugigida ngara critical services, ah, ma, dakada, dakada tatsakti. Tugigil agelidil melomol, mengar ra blu, omesengi provide the services required at ra blu. Agi da omesengi, mral merion, mora agel, di essential, ba agel gukpa di, imongar da lela ngartel badjet. Msel bomomesetel badjet, eh, Mr. Presidente, ndireka moktega tialuldasul molla, ah, pringatensio el mortel priority ra badjet ra blu belaw. Wasen ngara mal purpose ra government, ten ngara purpose ra adalurior ngi, ngara, ngara production akto de egal obisertti. Mang general, korra general language, sendi seda clu, ah, sel kamitin momurur ngi. Agi da stato, meradu ngi, mogudu sel fund availability analysis, if priority is ra badjet. Estu critical services, emra mogudu essential services. Sula, Mr. President.
Senator Inabo.
Ah, Mr. President, akodi ogirwa seki tiang amendmentel mora badjet, lo, atang, um, taang amo implementa tegi de, alla, um, taang, ngaral ministria mo, oh, oversight tiang. Le, summa, badjet akmula se, ah, agi daludota mora judiciary, eh, ndekal gire dal chen, ndekal se dal chensel se ala katachensel badjet, lo. Akura di, um, soal monde ngela se tiang amendmentel mora, ala arabadjet. Sula.
Senator Ludim.
Sula, Mr. Presidente, la ala badjet adimo lamolmo. Ni gidekwa, msaule ulaba jet, Mr. Presidente, ma, ah, nisiela Minister of Finance. Minister of Finance, se la appropriate, ah, dumodisporsaudow, ten ngariya sel certification of funds. Msel singela, dumosertifya funds, agel omesela funds availability analysis. Msel bomomesela, ah, tialuldasul molla, engari ngisel mumsadra funds availability analysis, ah, section three. Segi da omesengi, trigger oi tiagid lo merow, lo, minister of Finance, agel lo aishla gau maspige, ma president wasay, aligad malmat tiagid, ngasang saudow. Mo start number eight agi. Sula, Mr. President.
Senator Ngireba.
Sura, tialle, Mr. Presidente, ade ospe angeswak tregibel konfused. Mung, tiang mo activated, sevol musongsaudow, demokada oba, priority ra spe laudow, akura, kurra, soal mo understand wasi, ngara purpose.
Senator Ludim.
Sula, Mr. Presidente, sula Senator Ngireba. Section three, Mr. Presidente, sevol trigger sel FAM, ngasang saudow, dumodaxa certifya full employment, ah, funding. Eh, more se action, page two, ah, line 27, emral mo, ah, critical services, ah, deagal mengur. Endenag ngar kuif critical services, emral bulu essential services, services, emral oldanganen. Ah, pa iseklim, Mr. Presidente, tiang moktega, tiang make sure de protect ra adra health, ma adra, abla bulis, ma adro ngara, ah, mengar ngela blu, ma adro, lo ngara, ah, health ra, ah, way. Agi agil dasa critical services, deakaswe, dumosertfshen, ngiril dingariya bekel time, segi da moktega tiang. Again, ndireka ngar first reading, Mr. President, general language, sendi se, ah, intenta tialuldasul molla. Sula, Mr. President.
Senator Ngireba.
Sura, tialle, Mr. Presidente, kodi soal clear understanding, ngagale, I know tiang mora kamiti. Mang, tiang adimo urior, se blal ngasongsaudow, enwal ngariya framework, wasegada staten mo itaudow, ah. Tiagid blabu, ngamotanga ngara law enforcement, ilmora healthcare, ilmora utility, seya, is that what I'm understanding. Ah, ogir seling, gida ngariya, under the Vice President's office, ngariya nemu. Angariya tauktudi, we say gida wal tegar alidamo. I'm just trying to understand how, how it's all gonna work, ah. Akwadi ospe angeswak, sula.
Senator Ludim.
Sula, Senator Inabo, sel, diliya, Mr. President, andra Vice President, tanemo. National emergency, xel bol emergency, tarek tuksel momesengi mora, ilguksaadra funds availability. Mang, there's a difference. El ala ngariya uncertain times, ah, economic, she, Mr. President, ah, tial region agi. Tadek, tadek, gundash, manday, ah, aklo balulol user agi, wasay, put your act together, lakorayosa. Ntiang, eh, Mr. President, ah, moktega, ah, adimo eitialwa sein. Ade botregibel gargit, de moklabela omi talaudow. Eh, bomesegel essential services, ma critical services, and put the money where we claim wasia, interest regida ngari. Ilage, Mr. Presidente, gado tokera badjet, ten ngariya ksera. Agi de valuations, el mosiga credit, momsauder ngi, ilmora paldak, amalututel, girela, adalang akirara. Si dadigal traman moktega tiang, wasay. Amedaba ebi, emai agel udu de la way, ngar remo, se la tokora oguru, ma tokora askulu, ma tokora health. Ilbore se, akra dar tial, ulu, gukpa, ilbore ngiya otsuri, guktra, ma tokora omilili. Sula, Mr. President.
Malamolme, Senator Ngireba.
Sura, tialle, Mr. Presidente, tial adigamentel mora, agamitin momsu bertiang. Ah, akwadi ospe tregibel understand ra, intent ra introducers. Ndibolo, Mr. Sel constitutional responsibility, ah, olbi ragululaw, in terms of the power of the purse. Magriga, el mora kamiti wasi. Tiang mo infringe, se, hook power, ah, olbi ragululaw, almerit ra badjet, we deren betogaudow, dumalmakasaudow. Sende kal ngarelela olbi ragululaw already, et tiawal korra, lakas in. Alde kal sel olbi, olbi ragululaw, almeru sel legislative oversight that did, evaluate ra budgeting process. Se di, amendmental mora kamiti momsu bertiang. Sula, eh, Mr. President.
Sula, eh, Senator Ngireba, ngariangod, Senator.
Sula, eh, Presidente, ti, eh, ngariya concernal kaman biswakal looti. Wasia, budget office, sel certifya funding and base ra badjet ten ngari. Mang, gadek sebe edel, eh, ngariya audow, ten ngariya request, temdul wasen, gia, nde kal sebe, mengitertel audow. Ya, al sugum, ngariya financial crisis, mang, mo deak, ah, mo deak available, el financial resources. Eng, ngariya, ah, ngariya provision, ah, badjet, lo, waseng, um, gaddamotatsa reserve, eh, emronge, la, almutolomesela badjet, eh, change seni, ding. Tial, al sugum, intenta tial la override de ra, ah, badjet, ten gire dena, el make sure, eh, gada, gada ru liam sisi el language, sel tial la, wasay. Um, ngoy ngaral timing, trigger, sel, el krisi el tiagid, la, el suldiya badjet, el mo deaki, agi da dispenda audow, tokiraqat tiagid, um, el wayal, gukka, essential services, el, el gida maintain, eh, esuldiya badjet. Akura di, segi da concernal agi, President, ma tioti, eh, sula.
Sula, eh, Senator Inabo, Senator Quarte.
Sula, tialle, Mr. Presidente, malul, itasil se orakoma, arawon senators. Presidente, ah, tregal korra, misateling, de, malakala, emaila, agel korra, mallo khol, temelamdasuri. Pakti, dolitial, morsel kamitil moomesil, wasay. Ah, na ya experience, sula, executive branch, as a minister of health. Emno create ra minimal essential program, ah, minister of health. Tiang, ah, basically, ndilul, wasay, agi gida minimal, essential, equipment, ma gear, ma personnel, adi al gire la health, el morior ngi. Mang, me del wa, osiula, wasay, al sugum, mang, kadosiga transportation, ah, gida mora, ma, eh, el morabi, eh, guksebe la diududad, el malal rat, ed make sure rat, ah, ngariya hundred percent. El akal talsil se, de, eh, guk tokodwa, amlay elmei, el alu ulamadil par. Angumra, wasesel kamitil moomesil, ya, abay girel moomesil, wasay. Bellelu ngil, el bod, require agar rogul agencies, il mogimer sel minimal essentials, sel make sure, ah, services, etiradegal bon metro. Se di, kamitan, amor kamiti, sula.
Senator Ludim.
Mr. Presidente, malmasaule, Vice President, ah, Senator, atakal Senator Quarte. Eh, sakladite, Mr. President, ah, onga olbi ragululala ten ngari. Eh, akti molutti, atangak, late, Senator, tiati gisole, el ngar segi den, urior lobongi. Ya, sula, Senator, sula, ah, Senator Quarte, abramrak, tial, accept the chamber. Emra no, a demand, ah, minimum essential services, ma, a production oguru. Et tiang, Mr. Presidente, se lorgariya, Senator Quarte, ah, tadek, mal, lu ula, tadek, moktega tiang, uldasul molla. Amortau, segi dal moktega, agel roguy, el agency la government, el wong, mlongaseuara. Agel critical services. Mang, moktega tiang, uswe, tokodwa, kada, kada, again se rogula, sel mengaradadesin mongil. Emra agel blal dunga, ah, Doctor Quarte. Kambo, tokodwa, korra rogua, deba eitang, amolungil, malakal adam se sual. Gudukma, trakpe, ah, sena agel uspa alabu, deba ngi, agel otsuri, gukpa, tokolabu, el merula picnic, gukmerula karaklendek. Nisa kada di, balokara badjet, eh, Presidente, dingasongasal bekel time. Ndigalaj sal gukma, limis, sel bisongoselil, agel rogun, mal ebeng, bo ngi, agel udu, de dakada ngara priority. Sula, Mr. President.
Sula, Senator Ludim, digangod. Senator Mariur.
Tiak se tiang, angara, angara first reading, tial, amorakamiti, ndireka, uswe, lo urior, ngela kamiti, ah, sel mengur, ah, ngi, agi gida, tokokonsul, bekel. Tabele tungura, sektor ngi, alngura first reading, eh, asanin ma kamiti.
Etir gerrogu ilgonger tialuldasul molla rakotlomngiwell duoi. Omtok. Namai assign el mora kamitira waisen minz. Lulider.
Se Presidente, the board Senate, maqtrigal move the passera Senate Bill 12 dash 29 rakotlomngiwell.
Si damotion namdu ne seken makler gamibataitron.
Senate Bill number 12 dash 29. Bill for not to protect and preserve all known tarot patches in the Republic of Palau, as cultural conservation and heritage site, and to establish a research for such site. Tialuldas mulla, amo, malvol ba, agel, se ra blu belaw, babalul, ah, mo, cultural conservation and heritage site. Tadi regal motmo kra vechistri, ligele agi gida, ah, tokora, mesi. Tialuldas mulla, bitu tushia Senator Brian Malirei, Senator Enlati Pedro, Senator Tichay Imru Mongsaow, ma Senator Salvador Sadet Alams.
Regel tialuldasul molla, bodontira, Senator Malirei, bol sodi, tial tokora gukau. Senator Malirei.
Sula, eh, Mr. Presidente, malungil, itasil se merakau, marbekel members, ah, Senate. Eh, tial, uldasul molla, ah, utui ra ongit, ya, dakamlo, korra, mokadro derhingi, molla. Wa agel buldukra legislative findings, wasay, se ra uriu ra bofa mahayan, ah, twenty twelve, ma twenty fourteen. Blu belamlo, utui ra mal, betogel ngeso, ra ikrel belaw, llasam lolsobla, ah, igal, mesela blu belal, milkamala, ah, ada. Mung, waisi gida, Presidente, gada, olngi taudowd, ah, blu, se lila blu belaw, nem gada, lolsobla, amse. Eh, guk pital say, de gada guk, malmal, amse. Ma, ontrirar, adil, lo, rur taurior, mar maasalu, klalwa, amse, ah, wasay, ah, ngire dena, la akter omrolle, de, deakdo, ah, vital imadlo, lo, ongisprawas, eh, krisi el imadlo, ngolebetrhingi, lorbetreti, wasaloli. Mang, tial, moktega tiang la, wasay, bol sebe la, ah, ministria HRTD, niya ongra, ah, Historical Preservation Office. Ah, ah, ministria Agriculture Fisheries, el motmakal tablon, erulia, oh, register era roguy, el mesela blu belaw. El mo register da, amse, ah, blu belaw. Osisiul timing, ah, roguy, el mesela ngara, oh, register era blu belaw, amo regorde de, protected area. Mung, partra, ah, igal, tial protected area network. Ah, moktega se, ah, waseng, gada, adil registering, mo way gal historical sites, ah, even though registered historical sites, eh, tadi, sainga MOU, eh, mongong, usel moktek. Mang, gada, llasam lolchisbiringi, ah, pan, atial pan network, mung, klabela, di agel, um, urior, al ebung activities, el gida kongi, ngar alse legal, amse, ah, di, okotmaklela, ogurulela, akukau maprac. Tial, uldasul molla, eh, Mr. Presidente, tadi regal mo oru krisi gida, ilgongerul, ah, sustainable development goals, ah, United Nations, el girela food security, ma, ah, sustainable agriculture. Segi da korra, akadiblum sodel, ngakamringa sulela. Beringa suliar senators, ah, ah, Pedro, Matel Lambs, Mar Mongsaow, ah, supporter ti, tial, tial bill. Eh, olngitra, ah, supporter, aral ya ulol, direkt, sula.
Sula, eh, Senator Malirei, ndeakakorra, deal, swaltz, bu se sel girela gukau. Senator Inabo.
President, kamsula, ah, tialle, kalgorak, bu se sel girela, akukau. President, ang, mrelungil tial uldasul molla, di, ah, mesang, tial, wasay, tiang maklon issue. Akal kuradi, ikekaril, toel, kuradi, de, ah, waisel, losauder ngi, ah, tangak, Senator Malirei, ilguradi, kme ngadi, bod, ah, identify, register. Ak, nukulai se, Presidente, leng, ah, ten ngariya, masrabiliol, um, guk tiang aldi lo gukau, tok prac, mang, undaset tial la, agil mo include raprac. Eh, nditial, makliira, blam, ralyaray, al tongatingi, ah, aral, maringiman, dangse, el motov, aral, namang, diklo, atol, amse. Mang, um, betoka, amse, al sugum, gada, declare historical sighting, ngire, ngiriwal, maluklaray, lama, aptelula, ang, ma, bade, ma, ah, ngarangklayele. Um, tadi regal ngariya, amse, ngariya obli, l, lo ma, ah, mgittion, laringi, mora, agel, amse, ma, dabong, nde kal se, dal ngara, amse. Um, complex, ah, ah, issue, ah, especially, agel, pasiol, klo, atol, nguok, laringi. Ma, malol ngitl, wasay, ah, tregal momurur, tial, sel kamitil, mongura, tial bill. El balungil subi, il waseng, um, gaddamakarang, eh, tika da stopa, apply mo toor, tika da stopa developmental morningi, le, kita amtengi, wasay, abela, ah, dimliwek, ah, adalongolela, utemeng, amse, engkaburs. Mang, klo, ah, problem, ra, abebiratalang oklurior, leng. Um, ngariya, talangokl, el poluta, amse, mang, lamodekal sebe, dal ngara, amse. Ma, acting segi de, concernal ngagi, olngitl, wasay, ah, olseda subi, tial, mongila, sel marangadralil, mo, mo, o balance, ah, development, ah, talangokl, sel moriya bliriar, ah, at the same time, eh, ngariya, ah, makliedel, sebe, dal, malaya kalete, ngi. Sula, eh, Mr. President.
Sula, eh, Senator Inabo, Senator Pedro.
Mr. Presidente, eh, ah, undasul, waset tiang, ah, agi gida, ngara, sel, page three, ah, for a chairman, adirek, gomlasmodi, ndigundaswa, agi gida, um, um, tari, ngar sel, waseng, permita, activities, ah, akmal mesa, agi gida, losaada, Inabo, wasay. Ngire dena, ah, ngariya, ah, kurra, segi dena balance, ah, between, ah, development, ah, agi gida food security, ma culture. Ma, direk, malomra ngi, Mr. Presidente, sel, ilguk, ah, ingam. El akut, dungura nor, ten ngariya, ah, governor, ah, ngarar, ah, while blalotabadi, ah, mlamor ya program, ah, ah, blu, ngarar, then, um, involve, ah, amse. Mang, ngariya, maasal, el ang, ngariya tour, ah, and, ah, bamonge, tour, agal, amse. Edirek, korra, ah, eh, real time, ngariya, mo, ngariya, wasay, magarabu, loru, la, gerguk, korra, while by product, ah, amse, ma, korra, omrul.
Senate Resolution Number 42. A Senate Resolution confirm the presidential reappointment of Mr. Asliyada to serve as a member of the Palau Business Authority Board of Directors for term of two years. The resolution will declare Mr. Asliyada the ultimate president of PBA Board of Directors, the chair of Culture and Culture. The President of the Senate, John Paul Lewis, by request. Senate Resolution Number 43. A Senate Resolution to express strong support for participation of the Republic of China Taiwan in the World Health Assembly and the World Health Organization, and to reaffirm Palau's enduring friendship and partnership with the Republic of China Taiwan in global health cooperation. The Senate Resolution will declare the Republic of China Taiwan the ultimate chair of the World Health Assembly and the World Health Organization, the ultimate representative of the government of Taiwan, to declare global health. The resolution will be... Vice President of the Senate, Senator Steven Chek-Cuarte, Senator Gatzui, El Tobsi Ino, Senator Cecil Lee Eldebeel, Senator Marco Ebrado Dim, Senator Uwai Kua Inabo, Senator Maesorni Abanglips, Senator Tiichay Yimru Mongasau, Senator Sarbados Sadey Talams, Senator Andu Tabalwal, Senator Enlati Pedro, and Chair Senator Gray Mariut.
The appointment of Velia Johannes will be assigned to him committee of CIP. The appointment of Alia Gilham, Norman Ngirata Boet, Cindy Fitzpatrick, Asliyada, will be assigned to Chairman Eldebeel, Chairman of Tourism. The committee will be adjourned. The session will begin. The resolution will be assigned to Chairman of Foreign Affairs, Senator Hira Abanglips.
Mr. President, I would like to make a note that the resolution is not allowed to be adopted. The resolution is not allowed to be adopted. We do not want to make a committee, but we want to make a committee. The adoption of the resolution calendar will be regulated. The adoption of Senate Resolution 12-19.
The committee will be adjourned. The session will begin. Chair.
Mr. President, we would like to make a note that the adoption of the Senate Resolution is not allowed to be adopted. We would like to make a note that the Senate Resolution 12-19, 12-24, 12-35, and 12-36.
If the motion is refused, the adoption of the resolution will be rejected. The appointment will be rejected.
Senate Resolution 12-19. Senate Resolution confirming the presidential reappointment of Mr. Taha Migati as the prominent representative and ambassador of the Republic of Palau to the United Nations Education, Scientific and Cultural Organization, UNESCO. The resolution will be made to Mr. Taha Migati as the prominent representative and ambassador of the UNESCO. The resolution will be adjourned by the President of the Senate, John Paul Lewis, by request. Senate Resolution Number 12-24. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Ms. Genesis Yu Roberto to serve as a member of the Palau Board of Accountancy for term of two years. The resolution will be made to Ms. Genesis Yu Roberto as the president of the Palau Board of Accountancy, Chair of Culture and Culture. The President of the Senate, John Paul Lewis, by request. Senate Resolution Number 12-35. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Mr. Jeffrey Olgril to serve as a member of the Palau Language Commission for term of four years. The resolution will be made to Mr. Jeffrey H. Olgril as the president of the Palau Language Commission, Chair of Culture and Culture. The President of the Senate, John Paul Lewis, by request. Senate Resolution Number 12-36. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Mr. Sylvester Francis Alonso to serve as a member of the Palau National Scholarship Board for term of four years. The resolution will be made to Mr. Sylvester Francis Alonso as the president of the Palau National Scholarship Board, Chair of Culture and Culture. The President of the Senate, John Paul Lewis, by request.
If the resolution is refused, the committee will be adjourned. The committee will be adjourned. If the session is resumed, the committee will be adjourned. If the committee is refused, the chairman of the Teval nominee and Taha Migati will be appointed. Genesis Roberto will be appointed. Jeffrey Olgril will be eleven years old. Sylvester Alonso will be twelve years old. The committee will be adjourned. Congratulations to the chairman. Chair.
Mr. President, the resolution is not allowed to be adopted.
If the motion is refused, the committee will be adjourned.
House Joint Resolution Number 12-5-2. A House Joint Resolution to show full support and equitable participation of the Republic of China Taiwan in the World Health Assembly and the World Health Organization, and recognizing its outstanding contributions to global public health and each enduring partnership with the Republic of Palau. The House Joint Resolution will require support of Taiwan, the participants of the World Health Assembly, and the World Health Organization, the global public health, and the Chair of Culture and Culture. The Speaker Gibson Qanae, Vice Speaker Mario Escolibert, Chair Taebleso Adagroy, Chair Yuta Gagibol Sr., Chair Sebastian Armari诺, Chair DeBaga Sebalt Ngamait, Chair Ender Ngamgati, Chair Francisco Lurgotong, Chair Nais Entzwalablay, and Chair Silberius Owotelley.
If the resolution is refused, the committee will be adjourned. The chairman? Senator Cuarte?
Mr. President, I would like to say that the committee has introduced a House Joint Resolution regarding the foreign affairs. The Senate Resolution 12-43. The joint resolution, Mr. President, requires support of Taiwan, the主席台, Taiwan, the observer, the World Health Assembly meeting, Geneva, May. It requires relationship with Taiwan, and Taiwan is held, and requires contribution to Taiwan, and global health. To include the coronavirus, COVID-19, and the information communication technology, the ability of Taiwan, and the showcase, and the overall benefit of global health. The World Health Organization said, "A health is held for all." The other politics, and related, and the other, and the other, and the whole, and the game. The other House joint resolutions were introduced. The committee has introduced the Senate Resolution. The resolution requires support of Taiwan, the observer, the World Health Assembly, Geneva, May. Mr. President.
The chairman of the committee will be adjourned. The House Joint Resolution will be adjourned. The committee will be adjourned.
Mr. President, I would like to make a note that the resolution, the resolution calendar, item 13, introduction of bills, and... Item 14, introduction of resolutions. Item 15, petition memorials and communications, and... Miss Linus Communication, 12-89. The Miss Linus Communication, 12-123. The Miss Linus Communication, President, enables to move on to the Miss Linus Business, Item 16. The Miss Linus Communications, which is listed in the document, will be approved. The item 16, the Miss Linus Business.
Chair. Senator Pedro.
Mr. President, I would like to pay attention to the主席台, 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 12-121. The主席台, Mr. President, will be... The主席台, it requires five appointments, nomination, and official president, May, the主席台, National Museum Board of Trustees. The主席台, Mr. President, will be... The主席台, was given, the title 19, section 202, 201, actually. The主席台, it requires nomination, comply, the主席台, National Museum. Mr. President, I would like to make a note that the主席台, the主席台, president, will be required to read the section 202, title 19. The主席台, will be required to read the members of the museum or board of trustees, and the president's recommendation, the主席台, while existing board member. The主席台, the主席台, director, the主席台, Bobbiere, the information, the主席台, director, the主席台, National Museum. The主席台, nomination, it requires the board, the主席台, president, last year, January. And if the主席台, the主席台, president, it requires the board. The主席台, it requires five appointments. It requires... It requires expiration date. The主席台, it requires five nominations, and the主席台, will be... The主席台, will be... The主席台, it requires. The主席台, it requires nomination, the主席台, May, and the主席台, will be... Assigned to the Senate Resolution Number 12-30. The主席台, will be appointed for service. The主席台, 12-31, Roberta Low, 12-32, Chloe Sikliano, 12-34, Elin Revlud, and 12-37, Governor Richard, it requires. The主席台, the主席台, will be... The主席台, will be appointed, and the主席台, will be appointed, the主席台, will be appointed. The主席台, will be members of the board, and will be appointed, the主席台, will be appointed. Anyway, Mr. President, it requires... The主席台, will be... The section 202, the主席台, will require the board, and the主席台, will be appointed, the主席台, will be members of the board. The主席台, will be attached to the主席台, will be attached to the... The主席台, will be appointed, Mr. President, the主席台, will be appointed, the主席台, will be... The主席台, will be appointed, the主席台, will be... The主席台, it requires the主席台, Mr. President, will be... The主席台, will be asked, the主席台, will be... The主席台, will be asked, the主席台, will be... The主席台, will be... The nomination of the president, will comply, the主席台, will be... 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 The主席台, Mr. President, will be... Since it requires the主席台, the主席台, will be moved, will be... The resolution will be... The主席台, will be... Will be... The主席台. It requires the resolution, Mr. President, protect the integrity of life, and require the rule of law. The主席台... The主席台, will be... 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 The process of... The主席台, will be... Appointed at the... The主席台, will be... The board, the member of the board of trustees, the主席台. The主席台, will be... The... The resolution, it will be... The主席台, will be... The issue will be... The主席台, will be... The主席台. Mr. President.
The chairman, Pedro, will be adjourned. The session will begin. Chair.
Mr. President, I would like to make a note that the主席台, the主席台, will be... The主席台, the主席台.
Michelle Lenios, Senator Hira Abanglips.
Mr. President, I would like to say that the主席台, the主席台. The主席台, I believe, is 12-25 supplemental budget. Post-second version of supplemental budget, the主席台. The主席台, will be... Mini-games. It requires funding, and... Diplomatic missions, the主席台, will be... Chairman of Foreign Affairs, will be... The committee will be adjourned. The possibility of additional supplemental budget. It requires... The主席台, will be... Mr. President.
The chairman, Talams.
Mr. President, I would like to make a note that the session will begin. And I would like to pay attention to the... Supplemental budget request, the主席台, May, Senate Bill Number 12-25. And I would like to pay attention to the... The主席台, the主席台, Antony Rudim, the主席台, who is in February 2020, and I would like to ask the主席台, the主席台, to... Request to adopt the主席台, the主席台. The主席台, Antony Rudim, the主席台, the主席台. The主席台, will be... The supplemental housing budget for 2024, PPL 11-37. The主席台, will be... The 500,000, the主席台, will be... The主席台, will be... The... 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 Private ownership. I would like to ask the主席台, the主席台. The主席台, senior citizen, the主席台, waiting list. The主席台, the主席台. The主席台, the主席台. The主席台, the主席台. The主席台, the主席台. The主席台, the主席台. The主席台, the主席台. The three million, the主席台, the主席台. The three million, the主席台, six percent. The three million, the主席台, will be... Hundred some thousand, depending on loan. The主席台, will be... The主席台. The主席台, the主席台. The主席台, the主席台. The主席台, every six months. The主席台, the主席台. The主席台, the主席台. The主席台, the主席台. The主席台, will be... The主席台, will be... 500,000, the主席台, will be... The主席台. At the time, Mr. President, the主席台, will be... The regional director of USTR, the主席台, will be... The主席台, will be... The主席台. The主席台. The主席台, the主席台. The regional director, the主席台, Joe Diaco. The主席台, will be... The housing authority, the主席台, will be... The主席台, will be... At the time, the主席台, will be... The主席台, will be... The主席台, will be... The主席台, will be... The主席台. The主席台, will be... The most recent information. The... The... At the time, the... Budget request for supplemental, the主席台, Senate Bill 12-25, will be 500,000 dollars, the主席台, housing, and 262,000, the主席台, payment, and... The... And this will be paid until October, 2025. The主席台, will be... 262. The主席台, will be... The supplemental budget, the主席台, will be... The other, the主席台, will be... The主席台, will be... The主席台, will be... Develop, the主席台, will be... The主席台, will be... The supplemental budget, the主席台, Mr. President, will be... 5.8 million dollars, the主席台, will be... It requires 3.3 million, the主席台, will be... Facility, the主席台, will be... The... 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 The administration, the主席台, the主席台. The federal programs, the education, the housing, the主席台, will be... The supplemental budget, the主席台, will be... The replace, it requires federal funding, the主席台. The program services, Ministry of Health and Human Services, will be... The other, the主席台, will be... The services. The... The services. The... The... The federal programs, the主席台, will be... The... 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 The administration, the主席台. longatmok la administration, eh Trump, re la altay. Kedumrdanget, lasense bel mo affected, girmalugulagagora adidala, alomiset, nasengara modub eh girela funding dollar era altay, ra da odilbergid. Eh Trump, eh lan administration ernyi a riviyo egel eh foreign agreement ra blura Amerigel lobengela bebir ra blu eh da odanget, naseng mo affected, teal compact riviyo argument, tegid malubendia. Ma gumratlasen, namogireder eh malmo ngil, gutmutla ngil, omsub, eh girela eh budget ra blurbelau, nundi mutra egel eh eh grant eh ngara blura Amerigel, ma ngara bebir organizations, ma bebir ra blu el dolay ra blurbelau. Eh sabedel mondenget, lasengara purpose egel grant eh ngarang muul giri aradar belau, eh oy ngarang mo terminate. Agumratlasen, egel kloktu trel bododngey emnamogirela egel grant dollar amodel nuul mo alay, eh mora egel midugid aradar belau. Ti momensionu sel stimulus grant ra blura Taiwan se over up ten million adolan ira bekarak. Ya gumesa egel regordel min, dimora infrastructure. Ya gumratlasen, egid bebir ra social funding namogireder omiset, ma egadam gara ngmay, multe, elmo klingweyore aradar belau. Eh mosadra food security, ediyagadum sisi, elonseola aradar belau lonseu tir otubelau dou del develop demsel sa egid euyang. Osisi utaimi, gedumret, naset abto gal ngaske aradar ngalgar belau na toda school, namorniya adu tir egid eset technology eh tansabedel musutpirir el muulamgegiril siobakti. Aygam, Mr. President, taluma kmlgoya aygana dangan Mr. Adm, rula ablirir, rula aurelid eh edo ra valyura egal udo dal dolay. Mong diakad douspe, eh moita egad udo, el mora togo nyamal diakad uspe re la altay. Altang sabedel outagang ra three yes eh dimedre tmocla egisabedel, lo giutegid supplemental budget re la altay. Dimlesagal, ma egan mora attention agau, mteal petel senators, eh malonitra eh gamitira awisen minsel financial maruts bol gutmutla ngil, omsub, eh girela a budget erid rawera bodakte teal eh budget request ra president, eh girela lagra twenty twenty five. Man, solange, Mr. President.
Solange, Senator Tullams, ngariangoda. Senator Cuarte?
Solange, Mr. President, akti bokedeb, akti furar senators el mor sel eh Ms. Cam twelve- one one seven. Mr. President, mletaskara gamitrigara held elmo falo abra mle eh concerner Senator Inavo, egel chronic ortho case, orthopiric case metiloda legal opinion, malerera tilod del mora Chairman Doctor Yanoh masegid ya Hensy, el merah Senate. Eh nditolengit wasi, bol subedel late triar adril mo return, eh bol silkola a meeting, lobengela Senate. Ma akti, attentional mora committee members wasi, please am review. Eh boringa tele dekola meeting, eh bodon okle discuss teleport. Ma volblatakl, rogultoe, eh the move forward. Solange, Mr. President.
Solange, Senator Cuarte, ngariangoda. Ndiah? Alugunedi, akti aktiolongit rigidar senators roguil wasi mema dhsal malmo ngil, masa ipngela blurbelau. Um, agumeser gid, gedemnamo fanda egale NGO, eh left and right. Ndiah gal mo ngit, ngiladu fand. Aktiregal tealtogora housing me dhsal mogorgikla, ngita bodol toba da local revenue, merula ablirir aradra blurbelau, egademo kadever ngi, makmalso domi. Egid sellul tubidi sel five hundred thousand eh laa egadam amngitaqren ngil wasi, ngireder mutrol toba da five hundred thousand. Eh diu ngil, digamiamadangel wasia a housing attara togo diaka endar ngi. Ya blurbelau roguira, daborong eang al mel mot toda ra southwest ekta diauspe a housing. Ma aktiolongit, madasal mogorgikla, ipngela blurbelau ngita do toba da udo, debodogadever ngi eh ngariha egel essential service, eh girela mal eh klangarara ade, eh bol ngeso ngso du ded, ma aktiolongit, tegid wasi dhsal mogorgikla, eh lang dhsal gora betragakla, udo del el alagongariha udo ded eh gimaamadangegida, diakadomo meoba udo, ta Amerigel, omeoba udo de eh tigal gid, eh direkham lamogata expense ertip eh gidadiakadomo meoba udo de, bay namo increasea expenditure gid, mora butok NGO. Mong seadigulongit, ngil wasi, eh bodogargikla. Ngita, ah, onya ipnged, ya uru le bodogagu, le ediligid, eh gire lia wa itet. Plol leader.
Adigiarara mislenus, eh President, sumdigiangoda, borra announcement?
Announcement? Diak?
Na, direkhal daka announcement, eh President, mongwaigemla amdura klaregal wasi, ndimo dingwan mor sel bitangan, blaid lowaisel wasi, mo atsurna sanaday, ma direkhal obisar President. Kalisek, mogal atsurna teal sesionurgid, sanaday.
Sila motionu namdungae second, narsanaday, etirge roguil gonengil du hoy. Omtok.